In compliance with Chapter 551, openings of Texas Government Code is amended. I call to order immediately the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Monday, May 21st, 2012 at 7:06 PM. The Board may be in closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties dis- or dismissal of a public officer or employee, liberation of the public purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, liberation of negotiated contract for prospective gifts to the district, liberation of commercial or financial information the Board has received from a business prospect, or liberation of the offer of financial other incentive to a business prospect under to consult with legal counsel concerning pending or contemplative litigation, order of settlement offer, or a matter on which the school district's legal counsel determines should be confidential in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, and 551.071 respectively. Thank you all for being here. That was just remarkable. As soon as I started talking, you all went quiet. And there was conversation, you all were getting to know each other, there was bonding happening, and it stopped just like that. So, thank you all for being respectful. Let's get going. We are looking for a motion to approve the agenda. And by the way, Ms. Moya is not here this evening. She is ill, and so she will not be joining us. Mr. Torres?
Move through with the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. There's a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Snyder. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and honestly, thank you very much. We are going to have a pledge from some school, which I can't exactly pronounce the name, but what is it called? What are y'all called? Williams Elementary. I'll try to raise. So, why don't y'all come on up? And we are very pleased to have them. Thank you for being here this evening.
Any relations?
Nah, not to my knowledge, but you never know. It's a big country. So, they are in charge, and we are at your whim. What would you like us to do? Gentlemen?
Please stand to say...
You can speak, talk really loud, so we can all hear you.
Please stand to say the pledge.
Okay, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the name of our Lord and our Father, and of our Son, and of our Holy Spirit. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Welcome. Can we find out who we have with us today?
This is Kadija Turner.
If I could impose on you, come to the microphone, so we make sure that we can hear the name with, and when they call you, just raise that hand a little bit.
This is Kadija Turner, and Alyssa Reynolds, Marie Albert Sweeney, Matthew Rispe, Matthew Kiros, Veronica Kovar-Rubias, Michaela Klein, and Ashley Kiros. And these are the future leadership team for next year at Williams Elementary.
Okay, introduce yourself and the who you have with you today.
I'm Alyssa Schmitz. I'm the school counselor. And this is Joan Bertino, our principal. And we also brought along our parent support specialist Stella Reynolds and a teaching assistant, Bernadine Samuel.
Okay, well, welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here. So, we're gonna, we're gonna come up in front, just so we don't make the, not that y'all are not incredibly tall, or we'll be incredibly tall, but you're not quite tall yet, so we don't want to make you have to reach too far. So, we're gonna come out in front, okay? And then, as soon as you see us get down there, start moving. Can we, I think there may be some family members, and maybe some other staff members from Williams. If there are, could you please stand and let us recognize you as well? Thank you for being here and supporting these wonderful young people. Now, we always say you can stay, but we really think you ought to go, just because there's other stuff to go do in your lives, and you're young enough, you probably have to go to get up tomorrow morning for school. So, have a great time the rest of the school year. Have a great summer. Thank you to all of the Williams team for bringing these children tonight. Y'all did a wonderful job. And I will ask the people in the back, if y'all will just make sure they get out before y'all come take those seats. So, let, just let them ease out, not erase. Okay, this, and this is a time that we really enjoy at the end of every year, although everybody's hectic, there's a lot of stuff going on, and we're trying to wrap up the school year. But we do have, what comes with the end of school year is obviously a lot of recognitions for a lot of great work. So, we're gonna start out with the, some human capital recognitions. David, thanks for being here, and let's, let's find out what we got.
Great. President Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Karstarfin. I'm David Lucier, Executive Director of Educated Equality for Austin ISD. Tonight, I have the distinct privilege of bringing forward for recognition nine individuals whose exemplary work as teachers, campus leaders, and support staff makes it possible for our students to succeed every day. I am, of course, referring to our finalists for Teacher of the Year, Principal of the Year, and Classified Staff Member of the Year. Before I call each of our colleagues forward, I want to remind our entire community to join us this Wednesday evening for Salute, a celebration of teaching excellence, which will be held at the Long Center from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. AISD and APY are co-hosting this event, in which we will honor outstanding educators and support staff from our ranks, including the big reveal of our district teacher, principal, and classified staff member of the year. So, to build some momentum for Wednesday night, it's my pleasure to introduce our finalists this evening. Let me start with the finalists for our Teacher of the Year, and ask that each finalist join me as I call your name. Our first finalist is our Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Tracy Graham, a second grade teacher from Cowan Elementary School.
And it's okay to give them a bigger round of applause, because their name is called.
Next is our Middle School Teacher of the Year, Alicia Brown Forbes, a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade ESL Language Arts teacher from Webb Middle School. And finally, our High School Teacher of the Year is Matt Earhart, an avid teacher from Anderson High School. Now, while we all know that good schools begin with good teachers, we also know that you can't have a great school without having a great principal. And I'm honored to introduce three here tonight. The first finalist is Joelle De La Garza, Principal at J.J. Pickle Elementary School. Next is Blaine Helwig, Principal at Graham Elementary School. And finally, Donna Hauser, Principal from Anderson High School. The work of teachers and principals is perhaps the most visible at any school site, and yet I believe what each of these exemplary educators would tell you is that their work would not be possible without a strong support staff, who are often the unsung heroes of our schools. It's my pleasure to introduce our finalists for Classified Staff Member of the Year, beginning with Rosa Linda Rivera, a parent support specialist from Pickle Elementary School. Our next finalist is Deanna Luna, a head custodian at Cunningham Elementary School. And finally, our third finalist, Janice Schneider, a guidance secretary from Crockett High School. Mr. President, members of the Board, and Dr. Karstarfin, I proudly present these outstanding colleagues for your recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Lucier. Appreciate it very much. Ms. Barksdale?
Thank you. Congratulations, everybody. It is my pleasure to recognize the Austin Independent School District Elementary, Middle, and High School Teachers of the Year. These exemplary and talent, exemplary and talented individuals, who are finalists for the AISD Teacher of the Year, were nominated and selected by their peers at the campus level. The Austin ISD Teacher of the Year will be announced on Wednesday, May 23rd, at Salute. Tracy Graham, the district's Elementary Teacher of the Year, teaches second grade at Cowan Elementary. A national board certified teacher, Ms. Graham is a product of the Austin Independent School District system. She teaches the importance of respect and the value of intrinsic motivation, so that students want to learn and make good choices. Alicia Brown Forbes, Middle School Teacher of the Year, teaches ESL and Language Arts at Webb Middle School. She says she has always dreamed of becoming a teacher. This is her quote, "I just knew that teaching was my calling." Ms. Brown Forbes' ultimate goal is creating an environment where her students feel invested and empowered. And Matt Earhart, High School Teacher of the Year, is a national board certified teacher who teaches advanced, who teaches advanced via, advanced via individual determination or avid classes at Anderson High School. Too many students face an uphill battle in their path, path to success, and I find comfort through empowering these students to truly follow their dreams. These three finalists represent the exemplary teaching that goes on each day across the Austin School District. The Board congratulates these teachers and appreciates the commitment they bring to their classroom. So moved.
Is there a second? Second, Ms. Torres. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and honestly, congratulations, and let's just wait, just, we'll do all nine of you, and then we'll have you all come up, because you're scattered, and I don't want this, it would, some of you gotta come on one end or the other, it'd create chaos. Not that you couldn't handle it. So, why don't we go to the next one? Ms. Barksdale, just keep reading.
Okay. We'll talk about the...
Well, you guys give a big round of applause for those teachers. And good luck on Wednesday.
On behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, it is my honor to recognize and congratulate the three finalists for the Austin Independent School District Principal of the Year. These three outstanding professionals represent the kind of campus leadership that makes the Austin School District an exemplary place to learn. The Board congratulates these leaders and appreciates the commitment they bring to their campuses and to our district. The faculty of J.J. Pickle Elementary described their principal, Joel De La Garza, as a teacher who has purposefully created a no-excuses learning environment, in which each child has the potential and opportunity to learn every day. The learning environment at Pickle includes adults as well as students. Mr. De La Garza described, believes in empowerment for teachers to work together and to set and achieve goals. The faculty at Graham describes Blaine Helwig as a principal who spends most of his time in the classroom, strongly involved in the learning process, in the learning process for students and for teachers. By the end of his second year as Principal of Graham Elementary, the school received an exemplary rating. Donna Hauser, Principal of Anderson High School, leads by example with grace and confidence. The faculty of Anderson High School describes Ms. Hauser as "a leader who is full of wisdom and wit, acts quickly and decisively, and seems to be able to clone herself, so that she is able to attend the majority of campus events." That's quite an accomplishment. We appreciate and congratulate all three Principal of the Year finalists this evening. So moved.
Is there a second? Ms. Torres, all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and honestly, congratulations, give those principals a big round of applause, please. Good luck to y'all Wednesday. Ms. Barksdale?
Trustee Lavoy has the next question.
Okay, Ms. Lavoy.
Thank you. It is my pleasure tonight to recognize the three finalists for Classified Staff of the Year. These three individuals have been selected for this recognition because they go beyond their regularly assigned job duties and exhibit outstanding leadership skills. Rosa Linda Rivera is a parent support specialist at Pickle Elementary. Ms. Rivera has done an excellent job in motivating parents to be involved in their children's education through workshops, parent coffees, and resources. Deanna Luna de Vayadaris is head custodian at Cunningham Elementary. Ms. Luna de Vayadaris does an exemplary job in her assigned duties, goes out of her way to help any staff member in need, and always does it with a smile. She supports after-school, weekend, and early-morning activities. Janice Schneider is the guidance secretary at Crockett High School. Ms. Schneider has inspired students to seek out possibilities for their future, and trains office aides with expectations for behavior, responsibilities, and professionalism. Through her personal actions, students are able to understand how to show respect to others and model behavior under pressure. The AISD Board of Trustees thanks, applauds, and congratulates each, each of these three finalists for your contributions to the achievement of our students and support of our staff. So moved.
Is there a second? Several seconds, so, Ms. Torres, Ms. Barksdale. Okay, all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and honestly, congratulations to all of you. Good luck. Give them a big round of applause. Good luck to y'all on, on Wednesday. Let's give them, this is, you know, this year's best of the best. If you guys want to stand up and give them a standing ovation, that's okay, and come on up. If y'all got nothing else to do, and you want to give those Teachers of the Year, Classified of the Year, and Principals of the Year one more round of applause, feel free, help yourself. And what's really, again, cool about tonight, we all, we recognize many of our staff, but we also get to have student recognitions. And that's a very exciting thing, too. Tough for y'all, because it's the end of school, a lot going on. We appreciate all the students and staff that come out here for these. First we have is a recognition for the state science competition, and I've got Suzanne, I don't know who, who is coming up to speak about these? Ms. Burke, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Talk to us about science.
Yes. Good evening, President Williams, school board members, and Dr. Karstarfin. It is my pleasure this evening to recognize and introduce to you four AISD students who received first or second place, or won a national sponsor award in the ExxonMobil Texas Science and Engineering Fair. So, I'd like to invite the following students to join me at the podium. Sidney Hutton from Bowie High School. Bryson Hill from Merkison. Serena Zadu from Anderson. And finally, Morgan Pega from Bowie High School.
Thank you very much. And you'll see a consistent theme on these district-wide recognitions. We'd like our at-large trustees to have the opportunity to do that. Ms. Lavoy?
Each year, Austin ISD students compete in local science fairs and the Austin Energy Regional Science Festival. In the junior and senior divisions of the regional festival, first, second, and third-place winners move on to compete in the ExxonMobil Texas Science and Engineering Fair. This year, thirty-two students from AISD qualified and competed in the 2012 ExxonMobil Texas Science and Engineering Fair in San Antonio. Four students are being recognized for winning first or second place in their category and/or for winning a national sponsor award. It is with great pride that the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District commend and congratulate the student winners from Bowie, Anderson, and Merkison, along with their parents, and teachers, and sponsors for this achievement. Congratulations. So moved.
Is there a second? Ms. Torres, and Ms. Torres, I think you actually went to the science fair this year. Want to make any comments about how great it was?
I, I think the fact that these students have been recognized at this level is extremely outstanding, both for, for them and for the, the science teachers that have helped prepare them along the way, so they really deserve an extra recognition.
Ms. Torres has been a great representative of the district, and I think he goes to the science fair every year, so thank you for doing that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and honestly, congratulations. Please come forward. And y'all are bigger than the other younger people, so we're gonna sit up here. Where were you today?
Last one, last one, other, the other guy.
Yeah, so, I know we still have some students up here. If there are parents of these incredible students, would you please stand? We'd like to recognize you as well. We'd like to thank the, the, thank you. Congratulations to the whole family. As capable of those students are, we know they can't always do it by themselves, and we appreciate the family's support for each of them. And to the staff and the principals and at those schools, congratulations to you as well. Okay.
and at those schools, congratulations to you as well. Okay, we have one more recognition. And this is, are there two more? Oh yeah, I'm sorry, there's one more this district-wide than we had a couple campuses. Sorry. So, Mr. Orpez, what you got going on?
Yes, sir. President Williams, members of the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Karstarfen, tonight I'm pleased to present to you for recognition, students, teachers, and their principals who received top rankings on the National French, German, Latin, and Spanish Exams. To introduce these young scholars and their award-winning teachers, I present Ms. Tina Dong, Instructional Coordinator of World Languages. Ms. Dong.
Tina, welcome. Always good to see you every year.
Thank you. Very good to be here. Okay, well, it's a very good thing that we have plenty of foreign language students to recognize tonight, but for this reason, teachers, principals, and students, we're going to ask you to stay and stand up and stay in place just for now, as I call your name to be recognized. So we're going to start first with the French recognitions. Keeling Middle School, interim principal Crystal Bernard, magnet director Beth Cooper, teacher Sally Finkley. Students are Amelia Nico Carsonis, Josephine Walker, Jonas Shockett. From the Liberal Arts and Science Academy, principal Stacia Crescenzi, teacher Ruthie De Horton, Kimberly Sherrod, and the students Lucy Kaler and Bradley Girardot.
Okay, let's give a pause and a big round of applause for those folks. And just the camera, there's one over to the left as well. So if you want to scan to my left, your right, so we can, there was one hiding in the corner. There you go. He's standing up, so I'm presuming he's being recognized. Congratulations. Okay, so y'all welcome to stand, but you may want to sit down. That way we'll let the next group of people stand, and then we'll have all of you stand at the end.
Next, we'll continue with the German recognition. From the Liberal Arts and Science Academy, principal Stacia Crescenzi, teacher Carrie Jaworski, and the students are Erin De Conchini, Travis Duck, Gregory Lyons, Jonathan Dornhofer, Hannah Dornhofer, Catherine Nahiba, and Rania Behrens.
Are they standing? We'll give them, there you go. Representing the whole team. Congratulations.
Continuing on with the Latin recognition. Keeling Middle School, interim principal Crystal Bernard, magnet director Beth Cooper, teacher Linda Zappa, and the students are Ethan Russo, Jonathan Sadun, Matthew Weinberg, Theo Rogers, Erin Teel, Nicholas Manavi, and Quinn Simpson. From Small Middle School, we have principal Amy Taylor, teacher Debbie Lake, students Dirk Yapel, Hannah Willard, Elizabeth Kolbe, Douglas Archibald, and Jessica Schwenke. From Austin High School, principal Dr. Lucio Calzada, teacher Richard Queen. Students Joseph Voss. From Bowie High School, principal Stephen Kane, teacher Debbie Lake, student Anne McDonald. From Liberal Arts and Science Academy, principal Stacia Crescenzi, teacher Byron Brown. Students are Michelle Marshawn, Blake Karwoski, Roger Kane, Elijah Berish, and Stephen Yo. And from McCallum High School, principal Mike Garrison, teacher Nick Martin, and the student is Braden Palowski.
Congratulations to all the Latins. Okay, y'all can sit down. Just kidding.
And last, but definitely not least, we have the Spanish recognitions. From Guiriski Middle School, principal Vicki Bowerly, teacher Erin Villarreal, students Hadley Cosper, Thomas Crane, Tom Doe. From Keeling Middle School, interim principal Crystal Bernard, magnet director Beth Cooper, teachers Aurora Flores Wolski, Haley Savage, and the students Leslie Martinez, Allison Martin, Efren Garjunio, Sonia Aguilar, Sarafina Fabriz Green, Judy Shan, Crystal Garcia, Maris Alfred, Santiago Lopez. From Austin High School, principal Dr. Lucio Calzada, teacher Carlos Perez, students Jocelyn Monroy, Anna Ortiz, Karina Parahon, Jasmine Torres. From LBJ, Early College High School, principal Sheila Henry, teacher Carlos Lopez, students are Christian Diaz, Jennifer Alonso, Jenny Garcia, Nubia Montanari, Sonia Martinez, and Mario Soto. And from the Liberal Arts and Science Academy, principal Estacia Crescenzi, teacher Olivia Hernandez, and Angie Brown, and the students are Megan Aurora, Grant Colbert, Tim Luce, Anne Waldman, Kira Prentice, Daniel Weinberg, Agatha Ni, Alexander Dolan, Nathan Hattersley, Annelie Page, Carlos Alvarez, and Lorena Galindo.
Congratulations to all of them.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing all those names. Okay, recognition for you folks. Thank you very much, Ms. Lavoy.
On behalf of the AISD Board of Trustees, it is my pleasure to recognize and congratulate these language students for their performance, for their command of their language, as reflected in their performances on state-level exams. On the National French Exam, five students received scores that rank in the top ten percentile in the nation. On the National German Exam, seven students scored in the top ten percent in the nation. These students demonstrated that they have superior knowledge of both the language and the culture. Nearly three hundred students in the district took the National Latin Exam, and of these, the Board proudly recognizes twenty students who received the highest ranking, the summa cum laude gold medal. These students not only competed against other secondary students in the U.S., but against students from thirteen foreign countries. The Board also recognizes and congratulates thirty-four students in the district who scored in the top five percentile on the National Spanish Exam. More than seven hundred students in the district took this exam, and these particular students received the highest honors, the top gold, or oro distinction. Congratulations to all of these outstanding students for the demonstration of mastery of the Spanish, French, German, and Latin language and culture. Congratulations. So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Torres. Okay, all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Congratulations. Passionate, unanimously. Y'all want to come and see us? We'd love to say congratulations. So, and then that way y'all can all go after you get
Hey, many of those students already bolted out, but I know there were many parents and family members with those students. So, on the behalf of those that are still here and those that have already left, can we give the parents of those wonderful students a round of applause, along with the students as well? Congratulations to all of them. Oh, we got two more recognitions. Ms... Dr... Mr. Bergeron Harris. Dr. Bergeron Harris. Dr. Bergeron. Do you remember that? Dr. Bergeron?
Yes, I do.
Dr. Bergeron's here. So, we got two more, and that was our district right now, we're doing a couple of schools that have done some remarkable achievements. Dr. Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, Board of Trustees, Dr. Kostarfen, I have the honor of bringing forward for recognition the Keeling Middle School Quiz Bowl team, who won the state and national Quiz Bowl championship. Quiz Bowl is an academic competition in which students compete in teams of four. The Middle School National Championship Tournament is a premier middle school Quiz Bowl event. Quiz Bowl participants answer questions in academic subject areas in mathematics, science, literature, history, social science, and fine arts. The individuals who will be recognized tonight are as follows, but before I present the students to you, I'd like you to recognize and applaud, maybe not right now, interim principal Crystal Bernard and sponsor Ms. Patty Hill. I'll ask Ms. Hill to stand so you can recognize her.
We can give them a round of applause.
And our dynamic Quiz Bowl students are Ethan Russo, please stand, Brandon Lee, Jonah Shawkut, Corin Wagon. Now, this one's a good one. Nishanth Kalavah Kalanau, but he's not here. Also Avani Shastry, Graham Stockton, Ujwal Panya Mathula, and Jonathan Sadun. So, I ask that the board at this time recognize and congratulate the students and sponsor of Keeling Middle School for recognition earned at the Texas Bowl Associate... Quiz Bowl Association held at the Yes Prep High School in Houston, Texas, and the National Championship Tournament in Chicago, Illinois.
That's remarkable. Ms. Bradley.
On behalf of the AISD Board of Trustees, it is my honor to recognize the Keeling Middle School Quiz Bowl team for their outstanding performance this year in state and national competitions. For the third year in a row, the Keeling Quiz Bowl A-Team won the Texas Quiz Bowl Association Middle School State Championship. At that tournament alone, the Keeling A-Team had a record of 11-0, and the average margin of victory was 525 points per game. Then, in late April, the team traveled to Chicago, Illinois, where they won the national championship for the second year in a row. This Keeling team is the first and only middle school team to compete in the high school varsity circuit, where they earned a top-50 ranking and the opportunity to compete in the High School National Championship Tournament in Atlanta. This team is also the first middle school Quiz Bowl team to participate in college tournaments, where they have won rounds against college students. Now, this is something I didn't know. Do you know they beat Tulane? Do you hear me?
Sorry, Dr. Kostarfen.
They beat Tulane. And not only that, they lost against Texas A&amp;M one time, and then the next time they competed, they beat them. Now, tell me, that is not awesome, and these are middle school students. That is awesome. It is with great pride that the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District congratulates the students who compete as part of the Keeling Quiz Bowl team for their great success at the state and national levels. Congratulations to their coach, Patty Hill, and that is so outstanding, and so are you, and interim principal Crystal Bernard. So moved.
Motion, does we have a second? Second, Mr. Guzman. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passionately, congratulations, please come forward. And y'all may recognize a few of these students actually just came through on the foreign language, world language recognition as well, so very talented young people. And I know the students are still being greeted by some of the board members, but if you are a parent or a family member of this remarkable group of Keeling students, would you please stand and let us recognize you as well? Thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize them. I am also expecting y'all had to do a little bit of work between the Houston trip and the Chicago trip and getting them all ready, so thanks for your support of these wonderful students. And congratulations to them, and hopefully we will see them on another recognition in the future. Okay, we've got one more recognition. Dr. Harris, is this yours as well?
Yes, it is. President Williams, Dr. Kostarfen, Board of Trustees, I am proud to share with you that J. Frank Dobie Middle School has been recognized as a national avid demonstration school. Quite an honor. Avid demonstration schools are examples of avid implementation at its best. Out of 4,800 avid sites nationwide, only 2.8% or approximately 125 schools are recognized as demonstration schools. National demonstration schools are independently verified as such by teams of experts from the National Avid Center in San Diego, California. Through years of preparation, dedication, and teamwork, J. Frank Dobie Middle School was recognized on April 12, 2012, as an avid national demonstration school, a prestigious honor. The principal at J. Frank Dobie Middle School is not here tonight, she's ill. Ms. Carol Chapman, so we would like to congratulate her. The avid sponsor is also ill, Ms. Christie Barrett. So, representing Dobie Middle School tonight is Ms. Sonia Sanchez, who's the assistant principal at Dobie.
Come on up. And stand next to Dr. Harris there for just a second, Ms. Bradley.
On behalf of the AISD Board of Trustees, it is my honor and pleasure to recognize the faculty, staff, and students of J. Frank Dobie Middle School for the recent recognition of Dobie as an avid national demonstration school on April 12, 2012. Dobie is part of an elite group of schools nationwide who have transformed their school cultures through avid implementation. It is with great pride that the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District commends and congratulates the faculty, staff, and the students of J. Frank Dobie Middle School for this remarkable achievement, and particularly congratulates Principal Carol Chapman and avid site coordinator and teacher Christie Barrett for their commitment to excellence. I had the opportunity to visit Dobie about a month or so ago, and I have to tell you, board, it is amazing at the excitement and just looking at the student and the college-going culture that they have created at Dobie. It is absolutely amazing. I was led around by avid students. I went into several classrooms, and just the active engagement, looking at teaching and learning, and how the kids were just actively engaged in what was going on in the classroom was just a sight to see. And I want to thank you for the invitation to come, and I look forward to visiting again. And, board, so moved.
Motion, we have a second, Ms. Barxteil. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passionately, congratulations, please come forward on behalf of the entire Dobie team. Okay, congratulations to Dobie. That wraps up our recognitions for this evening. Board, you may recall, we may even have some into June, because there's even some things that occurred late in May for which didn't make this meeting. So, we're very fortunate to have a number of students and staff that have done such a wonderful job, and we appreciate the opportunity to recognize each of them. Okay, now, we're going to move to citizens communication. And this is the time, we dedicated each regularly scheduled board meeting for public comments and openings law and the rules of this board. There will not be a dialogue between the persons, the microphone, and the board, but we'll be taking notes in order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period. Each speaker will be allotted two minutes of time, with a maximum of 30 speakers allowed, as is the board's longstanding practice. Each speaker must have signed up in person and cannot yield their time to others. The board will not allow substitutions or yielding of time. As you come to the microphone, there's a device that will light up as you move through your two minutes of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please take up the opportunity to sum up your comments so we can move on to the next person, and each person who has signed up will have the opportunity to address the board. If you wish to address the board this evening, but are not called when the maximum is reached, please know that you can submit your comments in writing to the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org, or by fax at 414-1486. We did not reach the maximum tonight, so everybody should have the opportunity to address the board. And we ask that whether you come to give praise or complaint, that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name, for example, Mr. D. or Ms. A., unless you're addressing superintendent of schools or the board, then feel free to address us directly. The district is a local governmental body charged with serving the educational needs of all students, and the board meetings must be focused on meeting that charge. All AISD board meetings are televised and rebroadcast on ASD cable channel 22 and over the ASD website, and there will be repeats of the regular board meetings periodically. And we ask that audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for all others at all times. others at all times. The Communications Services Department provides a Spanish-language translator for audience members who need translation assistance when addressing trustees who need assistance understanding communications to trustees during Citizens Communication. If you need the service during other portions of the meeting, please speak with the interpreter. And Debbie Love will repeat this message in Spanish. Welcome, thank you for being here this evening.
Buenas noches, Presidente Williams, miembros de la mesa, Dr. Karstafen. Estoy aquí para ofrecer servicios de interpretación al español para quien los necesite. Gracias.
Okay, and I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's name. Please correct it when it comes up. Vincent Tovar, Brenda Lowe, and Steve Swanson.
Good evening, trustees. President Williams, Dr. Karstafen, I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Go Valley and PTA treasurer and also leader of Pride of the East Side. Please understand that the East Side Memorial Vertical Team needs answers and advocacy from you, the school board, and AISD administration. If AISD chooses not to, chooses not to inform community schools about what's happening and not happening, who will? Chooses not to, chooses, because we do hear it's about choice. Like Brian Miller, new East Side Memorial High School principal, was chosen by Mr. O., Associate Superintendent of High Schools, to initially be the interim at East Side because they worked together at Lanier. So, who did not choose Connor Grady? Like Idea chose to inform Allen teachers that they, and all their belongings, had to be out of Allen Elementary by June 1st, giving them one day after the last day of school, or like Met's Moms, part of our vertical team chose to protest after being told not to by AISD, but still gained a huge victory for them to have voice in evaluating their administration next year. We support Met's Moms, who on the day one of their protest said, "Where is Pride of the East Side? We need their help." Allen Martin and East Side Memorial High School communities choose to follow the CAC process but never voted to choose an in-district charter proposal. Was serving on the CAC the wrong choice for them. But parents can choose to put their kids in a school that forces them to sign a compact that many kids with behavior issues would not choose. Charter schools can choose to build an educational environment that skims kids and creates elitism among low-income communities of color. And you can choose to support them, or you can choose to invest, not disinvest, in Martin and the kids who may attend there because they get kicked out of other schools, or the kids who have known parents that send them there because Merkison may not be able to meet special education students' needs in their minds. Or some known Go Valley 5th grade parents who choose to send their kids to O. Henry because white people are there. Because after all, do you think West Austin would choose Idea? So, can you choose to believe that it's okay for East Austin? Please understand that you can also choo-- sorry. You can also choose to inform people, what is the Broad Foundation and who is John Fitzpatrick? I'm going to finish. Please understand that you can also choose to make decisions that affect the East Side Memorial Vertical Team, but also choose to visit these people that do the groundwork on a daily basis. Go Valley is getting great treatment from Transportation Department but still needs buses for kids who have to cross Airport in Springdale. We would like for you to choose to contact and meet with Pride of the East Side. You can find us at PrideOfEastSide.org, like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter. We can work together instead of continuing to be separated. Thank you.
Brenda Lowe, Steve Swanson, and Pete Montoya.
Hi, good evening, President Williams and Board of Trustees. I am Brenda Lowe, and this evening I want to discuss with you about text alerts. I'd like to see every school using text alert messages to enhance parents' and students' communication, especially in an event of emergency. The cost of this is $60 a month, which includes two custom keywords and up to 2,000 messages per school. That's just $2 a day for a powerful way to communicate that will transform instantly to stay in touch. The automated calls that we have after school hours, they're a good tool for the non-emergency situations. For being only $60 a month per school, texts can be sent out to every parent with a click of a button. Studies show over 90% of text messages are open, which will facilitate communication in case of any emergency situations. I personally experienced lots of anxiety for both my son at Hill Elementary and my daughter at Anderson High School during the Echelon Building Incident. This service will enable school administrators, excuse me, school administrators and everyone with text alert messaging at the click of a button. There are no contracts, can be canceled at any time, and this makes using the technology easy, affordable, and accessible. And that's what I wanted to share with you, and I do have flyers, a little information packet I could give to each one of you. That's what I like to say.
Well, thank you very much. If you want to give it to the board secretary over here, and she can pass it out.
Absolutely, and thank you so much, and--
Thank you for being with us this evening.
Okay, thank you.
So, Elaine, you want to-- That's right. Okay, thank you very much. Steve Swanson, Pete Montoya, and Luke Meskowitz.
Good evening, my name is Steve Swanson. I'm here as an AISD Up Close participant, and I can't think of anything more important for a school district and its community to find a way to be close to its kids and its students and its parents. So, I'm here to encourage that that continues and that actually becomes more participatory and actually maybe becomes project-based, where a group of people who find a way to do something for the kids in the school district. I also want to celebrate a couple of school board members that were with us on Friday. If I can mention your names, President Williams and Vice President Torres. I really appreciate you expressing your frustration with Citizens Communication. Two minutes of one-way dialogue doesn't really affect much, other than maybe get to hear some pain and hear some information. But more importantly, you actually said you would really appreciate a phone call and having a chance to meet with people one-on-one and actually have interactive dialogue. And even told us how to do that, call the board secretary. So, I want to thank you for that because I think that's meaningful. And for you guys, I know several of us have had meaningful conversations in the past, but I just want to encourage everybody, reaches out to their board member and has an interactive dialogue so we're not quite as frustrated at Citizens Communication.
Thank you, sir. Pete Montoya, Luke Meskowitz, and Marcy McNeil.
Good evening, President Williams, our Superintendent Maria Karstafen, and distinguished board members. I'm here to tell you that this is probably the last time I'll bother you again, but I want to tell you, I am a native Austinite. I've always lived right there in East Austin. I went to Go Valley, Brooks, Allen, and Johnston High School. My dad went to Savala School. He was a dropout, but that's, he did have an opportunity to go there. And we all enjoy Austin. Most of all, the education that you have given all our children, relatives, neighbors. And I want to thank you because you took an awesome step to try to help our children. When you went for in-district charter school to see if you could help, the constant failure of our kids, it hurts when they're your kids. And what you took was an awesome chance to make it work. I ask you that I see constantly, month after month, a lot of people that don't agree with me or with us. There behind us are some of the parents, grandparents from the school. They can tell you, we're desperately looking for something different to change the attitude and the learning system of our kids. I want to appreciate it, and I want to ask you to please keep on pushing forward. We have to make it work. We don't have a choice. We need to make it work. I also invite you this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 to our memorial service at East Side Memorial. We do that every year for our 17 soldiers that gave their lives in Vietnam. We'd appreciate you. Thank you for--
Luke Meskowitz, Marcy McNeil, and Larry Amaro.
Dr. Karstafen, trustees, good evening. My name is Luke Meskevich, father of a Met's Elementary 3rd grader and member of Pride of the East Side. This morning, I read a short article in which the author Seth Godin said, quote, "You will be judged or you will be ignored. Those are pretty much the only two choices," unquote. Believe it or not, I thought of you all in how you've got a difficult job to do. You all make decisions that leave, can sometimes leave your constituents frustrated with you either way, yea or nay. I imagine those are the tough decisions, but probably also the ones you find most important. And of course, with regard to your in-district partnership with Idea, I remain both disappointed and vocal. Nevertheless, I really appreciate you all signing up for the job, and I think it's worth reminding all of us that unlike a lot of your critics, we are actually on the same team when it comes to our commitment to tax-funded public education for all children. And when we disagree over the details, let's not forget the fundamental purpose we all share. That said, I hope you will more genuinely involve parents, students, and community members in your decisions next year. And remember, community involvement isn't just giving audience to concerned citizens. It's about cultivating trust, true partnerships, and acting based upon an understanding of community interests that goes beyond phone surveys and citizens' communication, which probably means answering emails, phone calls, and following up on public concerns. That goes a long way. Because trust is hard to rebuild. At the Farewell Festival for Allen Elementary this past weekend, I couldn't help but feel I wasn't the only one sad the school was in fact closing, in all but name, to make room for a new charter school that was overwhelmingly rejected by the parents for whom it was most intended to appeal, leaving just 30% of next fall's enrollment living within the East Side Memorial attendance area. For a still-growing number of people, that's a wound that just won't heal. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy McNeil, Larry Amaro, and Chava Lopez.
Good evening, trustees, President Williams, Dr. Karstafen. My name is Marcy McNeil. I'm a teacher, and I also serve as the local president of Austin ATPE. I'm here tonight on behalf of our local unit scholarship committee, and I want to announce the 2012 recipients of Austin ATPE scholarships. Each year, our local sets aside funds for scholarships toward graduating seniors who are children of Austin ATPE members, and we award continuing education scholarships to our local members for advanced certification, to attend professional conferences, or to work toward an advanced degree. While our funding's modest compared to the cost of higher ed, our sentiments are nonetheless heartfelt. So, without further ado, our graduating seniors receiving scholarships this year are Marie Pettis, Bowie High School, daughter of Mary Ann Pettis; Adrian Gonzalez from Atkins High School, son of ATPE member Cynthia Gonzalez; Jasmine Weber is the daughter of member Amy Becker, and she's graduating from Austin High School; Grant Dorsey will be a Bowie graduate. He is the son of Michelle Dorsey. Steve Ayala, Bowie High School, is the son of Carol Ayala; and Deanna Reyna, daughter of ATPE member Dana Reyna, is also a Bowie High School graduate. In addition, we are awarding professional scholarships to Margarita Garza from Pleasant Hill Elementary, Beth Toshack from Go Valley, and Wenel Chen from Dawson Elementary. We're pleased to give back to our local members in this way. And also, in the spirit of giving back, I just want to put in a quick plug for a state ATPE website called teachthevote.com. I have a shirt here that shows the logo, so you can look for it on the web. With the upcoming primary and early voting ending very soon, I would invite you to visit this website. It is a nonpartisan but informative website that gives the candidates' views on issues of public end.
Thank you.
Hope you'll check it out, and thank you for your attention.
Larry Amaro, Chava Lopez, and Claire Ruder.
President Williams, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Karstafen. First of all, I want to thank you, just like Pete Montoya did a while ago, for all the great work that you've done. We've worked, for the past four years, Pete and I have worked together at the Johnston Campus, and we've worked with Sam Guzman, who's always there to hear us. And I know that he's led you in on a lot of our information that we've shared, and so we want to thank you, first of all. The other thing, before I forget, when Pete was here, he didn't mention that he was a veteran. And next week, when we go to honor the veterans that died for us, those, he mentioned 17, but if you look in that flyer that just went to you, that number of total veterans that died for Agent Orange has gone up to 36. And when we started five years ago, we knew of only 25. So, that number keeps growing, and we just hope it doesn't grow anymore. But we hope you'll come this Saturday to that ceremony. Also, we want to congratulate the staff of Idea Allen for going through and getting the applicants that they needed to be able to start this fall. We've met some of their staff, fantastic staff, those that we've met, very friendly individuals, very much concerned with our children. I know I've had some friends that have asked me, "Hey, can I take my children?" Unfortunately, they might have been in the 4th or 5th or 7th grades, but we're glad that they're coming on board, and we hope to see you Saturday, this Saturday. Thank you.
Chava Lopez and Claire Ruder.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent. I'm here as a representative for the Southwest Public Workers Union, which represents classified employees here in the district, and we're here tonight to talk about two issues very quickly. The issue on the pay raise. We want the board to consider, you know, a 6% pay raise for the classified employees. We feel that it's not fair to give all employees, including professionals, like you're proposing, a 3% for all across the board. And we feel that a 6%, you know, applied to the compensation schedule, not as a one-time supplemental as you're considering. The other issue that I want to talk about is the formula for the allotment of custodians, which is, we grieved, there was a group grievance that was filed back in August of 2010. And before we came to the board, you know, we met, and also, we came to an agreement that they told us that the district was in financial exigency. And so, we came to an agreement that the school district would conduct an analysis. And the analysis was conducted by the Texas Association of School Boards, and I just gave you a copy of that analysis. And what we were grieving is the unfair formula for the allotment of custodians, which we feel is not a good formula because the square footage is very high, and eventually, the school districts, the schools in the school district will become dirtier and will not be cleaned correctly because you're short-staffed of custodians. And just let me conclude by reading the conclusion, and this particular analysis was conducted in Bowie and Lanier's High School, Webb and Paredes Middle School, and Cook and Savala Elementary Schools. And just let me conclude by reading this last paragraph on there, which states, "Conclusion: The current staffing methodology provides a general baseline but lacks much of the necessary detail to ensure accurate staffing without compromising the level of cleaning. Applying ISSA standard cleaning times to detailed campus orders can produce effective and efficient staffing schedules. Regularly training custodians throughout the year will help maintain consistency and a high level of cleaning. And transferring direct supervision of custodial operations from campus administration can increase efficiency and consistency over district-wide custodial operations."
Please jump up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Claire Ruder.
Dear Superintendent and trustees, we are a school district filled with fear. Many highly qualified teachers and principals are afraid to exercise our constitutional right to freedom of speech and express our feelings about standardized testing, for example. We are afraid of your attempted coup at East Austin's Allen Elementary to turn it into a charter school that will serve so few in its own neighborhood because the majority of the community was smart enough to opt out despite your efforts to the contrary. How can we not be afraid when we look at the charter school teacher in Michigan who was fired for supporting her 8th grade students in a fundraiser for Trayvon Martin's parents? In this case, administrators don't have to be accountable to their constituents, but teachers have to be accountable to administrators, not students, who are being backed by-- teachers have to be accountable to administrators, not students, who are being backed by politicians who are misguided about child development. How can we not be afraid when we look at our Arizona neighbor who was fired for teaching Mexican students about their own culture? Apparently, he was not fairly representing the other side, which I guess is teaching that Mexicans have no culture, or at least teaching them a false sense of who they really are. We are afraid, but we are talking. Even when we have to watch our backs, we are whispering about these injustices in our lunchrooms and at our workplaces, in our private homes and churches. Sometimes, we are terrified that we will be the next victim on the street holding a sign that says, "Highly qualified teacher will work for scraps, must feed family, God bless." But then, we call upon the incredible volunteers from Occupy AISD and from Pride of Eastside who bravely address the school board on our behalf. If you can't hear our thundering hearts, then listen for our whispering voices, and we will tell you how to publicly serve, because we, the silenced majority, will be silent no more. We may be undermined, underemployed, underrepresented, and underinsured, but we steadfastly remain undeterred.
Thank you. Okay, Board, that concludes citizens' communication. Appreciate the input of the public. We'll now entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Ms. Torres.
Mr. Williams, I move approval of the consent agenda item.
All of the items. Yeah, 9 through 13.
All of the items, 9 through 13, yes, sir.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Williams, I'd like to pull 12.3 for a separate vote, please.
Okay. Is there folks willing to have a separate vote on 7.3, 12.3? 12.3, separate vote. We can pull up for separate vote and discussion. Okay, so, is there a second on, Mr. Torres, would you amend the motion to let 12.3 be a separate vote?
Yes.
So, is there a motion on the approval of the consent agenda, 9 through 13 excluding 12.3? Ms...
Are you looking for a second?
Second.
Second, that motion.
Okay. We'll talk about 12.3 separately. Is there any discussion on agenda items 9 through 13, other than 12.3? On favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passionate answer, thank you, Board. Let's talk about 12.3. Is there a motion or discussion? Mr. Schneider.
I have a question regarding this that I'm still not clear on. And Dr. Karstharfen, you did pull this item at the last regular Board meeting, and I do remember an item that was in one of the Board weekly updates recently about it as well. But the way I see this is, we're spending over a quarter of a million dollars for hub services for two bonds, which your program contingency levels describe as essentially complete for both bonds. So, I'm trying to understand why we're spending a quarter of a million dollars for this service.
Dr. Karstharfen.
Mr. President, trustees of the Board, trustee Schneider, it's my understanding that the two trustees, or maybe three, I'm sorry, Mr. Guzman, can you remember, is it three of you or two of you? It's you, Lori Moya, on the, that works with the minority contracting.
There's a hub subcommittee of the Board, which is...
Yeah, who is it?
Three members, Ms. Moya, Mr. Guzman, and Ms. Bradley.
Okay, so, this question from before, and then with the committee, and also in communication back to the Board, has been vetted multiple times, but basically, there are four significant projects that have not yet been bid. Lawrence and others, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the Performing Arts Center, the two North Central Elementary Schools, the Suckerfield Project, the City of Austin Parkland, is that correct? Right? And this is, this is at the heart of what the, how many projects and what they are. The committee talked about it, and if anybody on the committee wants to weigh in, but it was their judgment and ours that, that for this bid, that it was acceptable for the work ahead of us, and the administration supports the recommendation, I mean, supports the bidder. And our recommendation is that, that this has been vetted multiple times, and unless there's something else that somebody on the committee wants to talk about, we provided this information to the Board before.
Karstharfen, did you say there were four projects?
It's four, right, Turner? Yeah.
So, roughly $80,000 in consulting services per project to be completed.
You could look at it that way, or if you want to look at it for the construction budget, they range anyway, anywhere from, for each one, I think, as low as 1.5, but as high as, what was it, 27 or 28 million dollars?
60 million.
So, 60 million total?
85 million in total.
Oh, 85 million in total. Thank you.
Well, it just seems to me that we're spending an awful lot of money for a very, very short-lived consulting program. And it, I know this subject has come up repeatedly in the past. I have yet to meet anyone that's happy with the way our hub services are working, either from the minority-owned business side, or the folks like the Mentor Protege program that we use. But, I mean, a quarter of a million dollars for four projects.
Well, I mean, we had other bidders, and the lowest bidder was 178 million. The next lowest...
178,000.
I'm 100, I'm sorry?
178,000.
1,000.
Did I say million? I'm sorry. 178,000. The next lowest bidder is this 252,000, and then it went as high as 562. So, you've got each range, lower, a little lower, next to low, which is the one we're recommending, and then two that were higher than that. So, we could either, you know, I mean, it's the Board's discretion. You can vote it down, we can go back out to bid again, but, but this was not the highest bidder in the bunch. But you're right, though. It's not the lowest bidder either. It's the second lowest.
To me, it just does not seem like a prudent use of the funds.
Understood, if that's the decision of the Board.
Any other questions or entertaining motion? Mr. Guzman?
From the standpoint of the task force, we did not review or score the bidders. We went through, at least two of us went through the process with staff, just to ensure that the process of scoring was followed, and we were satisfied that it was. But we, this recommendation does not come forth from that task force. It comes forth from the staff.
Thank you. Ms. Torres, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradley had her hand up, and then Ms. Torres. I can't, both y'all's hands, I kind of looked at both sides. Ms. Torres.
I just have a question of clarification, just to make sure. In the recommendation in the agenda item, it says the amount of the contract is not to exceed 250,000. Is this a cost-reimbursable contract for services performed, or is this a fixed-price contract for one year irrespective of the services that are performed?
Well, I know that, Mr. President, trustee of the Board, trustee Torres, I'm gonna, y'all are gonna have to give me the detail on whether, I know it's a one-year contract, but the second part about, you know, the up to, and is it, you know, are we required to go all the way to the 250, is just as much as spent, up to? Okay.
So, Mr. Frye, just to be perfectly clear...
Mr. Frye, you might come up, just so we can hear, make sure we hear.
If I understand your response correctly, it may actually be less than this if the services that are required for a particular bid or activity do not dictate more effort on the part of the consultant to assist in the, in the program. Is that right?
Trustee Torres, that is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought, so I just wanted to be clear.
So, it's an hourly, hour in fee and expense-based contract for a period of, one year from some point in time, once it's approved. But I think to the point, if we can address the hub utilization, and it doesn't take as much time, it won't cost as much as the not-to-exceed amount.
Yes, that's true.
Okay. Ms. Bradley.
I can't hear you. Something's weird.
Can you, can you speak a little bit about what the expectations of the firm?
Well, trustee Bradley, in addition to the four new projects, there is ongoing work that would be conducted. And these projects do carry over for multiple years, so that would be part of the work. And then, also, the scope of work is pretty detailed. So, they're gonna be developing a database to manage it. They're also gonna be looking to increase hub participation. And so, it's gonna be a continuation of the work before. And there's minimal startup funding required. So, the price is only a portion of it, 20% of it. We looked at the program plan, the consultant capabilities, and also the, again, the management of the information and data processing.
I was just gonna say, the concern that we had was the fact that as we looked at the total number, the total dollar amount of expenditures, as we looked at contracts with, contracts that were going out for the bond, what we did not see, what we saw was a disparity as we looked at spending for minority contractors. And the one thing that I do know about hub programs is that there's a pie. And what we were seeing is that there was a single slice, or what I feel is a single slice, that we had minority contractors getting a piece of. What I didn't see was that whole pie, and how we could ensure that the services, that they were actually bidding on services that were throughout the contract. So, I support this for the simple reason that I'm hoping that we're bringing this consultant in so that we can look at the whole pie and not just have the contractors bidding on a sliver. And so, I do support this.
Okay. Well, we've had discussions. Is there a motion yet on this? Mr. Guzman?
I have a question for Mr. Frye. Do I understand correctly that the work that this, well, the firm that would be selected, whatever work they do, they have to submit for payment, such as a voucher or an invoice, and then it's reviewed by staff to make sure that that work has been done? Is that the way I understand it's gonna work?
Trustee Guzman, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Other questions or comments regarding this item? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Ms. Torres.
Mr. Williams, I move approval of item, consent agenda item 12.3.
Is there a second? Second, Ms. Bradley. Any further discussion? Mr. Guzman?
I do have a point to make regarding that, that item. Again, this program is very important to me, and indeed to all, or most of the Board members. There were several proposals which were very impressive. The staff made a selection and a recommendation based on following an established process. And while I don't have an issue, per se, with the manner in which that process was implemented, and the selection, and again, I say, while I, per se, don't have a problem with it, I do have to mention that there were, there was another group that, in my opinion, the Minority Contractors Association Coalition, which was also very impressive, in my opinion, based on the fact that they actually already work with the minority contractors, and have a following of minority contractors, and have a directory of such, and have members, and a membership of contractors. So, they're not being recommended, but I do want to point that out, because we actually relied on them quite a bit throughout the process of bonding, of the bonding programs, to provide advice and the like regarding the recruitment of minority contractors to bid on jobs throughout the process. And so, I'd like to wish them also well, and know that they will continue to work in the efforts that they already work in to advance minority contractors. And I have mixed feelings about the recommendation, but I do know that the staff followed a particular process. They followed it very diligently, and this is the recommendation they're making. And so, I'll blow my conscience at this time.
Any other comments? Ms. Lavoy.
I just have a question. I don't have any particular concerns about the material that's been laid in front of us, but I wonder if a member of the committee could explain to us, is the proposal tonight as a replacement for the hub program that we've seen the last handful of years, and if the committee recommended that we go forward with this new approach, could one of the members of the committee tell us what some of the downsides were from what has gone before, and what you see as the upsides in making this transition? In other words, it's a variation on a question that's already been asked. But I'd like to try to understand what you weren't happy with, and what you're seeking in this, this approach.
Can we make a two-part suggestion, a two-part response? So, I think staff went out for bids, to replace, we have an existing contractor that's done this for several years. The staff went out for bid, the existing contractor did not rebid, and so they were looking at someone else to provide the services. There was certainly interest in trying to enhance and make this particular program more successful. And I may let Superintendent and Mr. Guzman or Ms. Bradley address if they had particular things they were dealing with, but the previous consultants that provided the service chose not to rebid when this, when it was submitted. So, it really, in effect, trying to find someone else to do what the goals were, but do it potentially even better than it's been done in the past. But, Ms., Dr. Karstharfen, or Mr. Guzman, or Ms. Bradley?
Well, I think the question was directed to the committee members, so you can go first.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, at one point, the, there was gonna be an extension of the contract that was in place. The task force did recommend that instead of doing that, and it was extended for a period of time, short period of time, while the staff prepared to go out for bid. And they went out for bid. And again, Ms. Lavoy, the thought there was that we had had this other entity in place for a number of years, and we were never quite satisfied with the, with the work that we were doing, even though we acknowledged that, you know, they were doing possibly the best they could, but we felt that it could be done better. And so, we went out, we went out for that bid, and got several pretty impressive proposals as a consequence. You're welcome.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? On favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Abstained? Passed, six favor, one against, with one abstention. Okay, thank you, Board. Okay, we will now turn. We have one agenda on the superintendent's report this evening, and it's a continuation of our discussion regarding the possibility of a tax ratification election at some point in the future. Dr. Karstharfen.
Yes, Mr. President, trustees of the Board, on the agenda tonight is the ongoing or continuation of the consideration of a tax ratification election. You are not scheduled for action on this, on this item this evening. It has been placed on a, on a different agenda for action at the request of the Board, but most importantly, it is on the agenda for continued discussion also at the request of the Board. But I just wanted to briefly recap today what's been going on. For those of you in the public who have perhaps missed every Board meeting where we've discussed this, I'll highlight for you the background, and then turn it back over to the Board to continue your discussion that you left off with at your recent dialogue meeting. But the whole discussion has centered around whether or not the Board is making a decision to call a tax ratification election, but I think at the heart of the discussion, it's been mostly about when, not if, we're gonna have one. And so, that has really been the starting point for how we structured the preliminary budget for the 12-13 school year. On January 9th, at the direction of the Board, the administration presented information in order to receive initial guidance on whether a compensation or a tax rate increase should be included in the fiscal '13 preliminary budget, and if we did include it, if at exactly what level would you want it included? Subsequently, on February 27th, the administration presented... Subsequently, on February 27th, the administration presented the fiscal year '13 preliminary budget, which assumed no tax rate increase and included proposed expenditures of about $14.2 million funded from district reserves to support a one-time payment to provide all employees with the equivalent of a 3% salary increase. Now, over the past several months, the Board has conducted pretty comprehensive and deep diving dialogues that have been about, you know, by and large, all of the things that need to be considered on whether or not to hold a tax ratification election, but again, most importantly, when? Is it 12, 2012, 2013? And it also has been about indicating what clarifying decision needed to be made to determine whether or not we would do it within a particular month. So if you looked at 2012, for example, the only month we could consider is November. If you looked at 2013, we could look at June or November. So at the Board's discussion at its May 7th work session, it actually included the potential impact of actions of other taxing jurisdictions, as well as criteria that the Chamber of Commerce here in Austin has established for supporting any school district that's considering a tax ratification election. And you've seen those questions, and we've discussed those as well. Now, at that meeting, the administration offered information about initiatives that could be funded as a result of a tax ratification election. So in addition to looking at compensation increases, you discuss things like full-day pre-K or the fine arts. We had a very rigorous discussion about athletics. And we even talked about other things to support a lot of what we've heard recently from the public regarding the whole child and ensuring that we don't have a state assessment or tax slash star-centric culture for our students and staff. So that kind of got us in the more rich discussion about the whole child and what a comprehensive behavioral health programming might look like to support them in school. Now, for tonight's discussion, the Board has, for tonight's discussion, you have a few starting places that you could begin or continue this discussion. You, you've heard of all the things that you've discussed, but at the heart of where you left things as recently as your last dialogue, thanks to Ms. Brister, who was taking detailed notes of all the things that you were saying, as you'll see reflected in the agenda item, we tried to capture the list of what you called factors to consider in determining whether to hold a tax ratification election, but also when you would hold it based on the outcomes of some of these factors. So I won't read through the whole agenda item, but for the public's sake, I'll highlight a few, like, and like I said, when we discussed this last time, you talked about plans of other taxing jurisdictions for tax rate increases or even bond elections to support in the case of what we've been hearing, like the medical school or light rail, or like the city bonds that would support infrastructure needs for our entire community. You also were concerned about factors such as public opinion or the economic climate, which leads to one of the other factors, what might happen in the 2013 legislative session. And of course, you know, we are part of a school finance litigation effort, and so there might be outcomes from school finance legislation out of that. But either way, you have the whole list, and I'm not sure if tonight you're looking to prioritize those things or if you want to ensure that you have a bit more of a drill down on those factors. But I want to say, from the perspective of the administration, as you saw at our last meeting, we are a little bit stalled in the sense that just many of these factors are just simply unknown. We won't know them for some time, but the one that led us to not taking action tonight was a lot of feedback that we got from some of the other taxing jurisdictions that recommended to us, you know, just to give them a little more time to work and finesse some of the things that they were working on to see if at all, if it was at all possible to ensure that AISD is in conversation, is being considered in their conversations too, because it's pretty clear that, for example, with the medical school, if it is going in November 2012, that does make it a little tougher for all of us to be on a ballot like that. So perhaps we might consider, as we talked about last time, putting a stake in the ground for 2013. But these are things where you sort of left the discussion last time, and again, you're not scheduled to take action on this this evening, on whether or not you're gonna call a tax ratification election. But at the June, I want to just differentiate on what would happen at the June 18th regular meeting compared to what you would be doing at your August meeting. So at the June 18th regular meeting, the Board's scheduled to take action on the fiscal year 2013 recommended expenditure budget in order to close out the school year and provide direction for expenditures for the coming school year. As you know, you don't meet in July. Your regular meeting isn't until the end of August, and we want to be sure we open schools with a lot of good, clear direction about what we're spending our money on. Now, formal action to adopt the fiscal 2013 revenue and expenditure budget and tax rates pursuant to your statutory requirements is scheduled for August 27th. As a reminder, state law requires taxing jurisdictions to post and advertise the proposed budget and tax rate and to conduct a public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget. Now, to meet these hearing notice requirements, the Board would need to take action on advertisement and proposed tax rates by August 13th, which you also have, I think it's a work session, I can't remember, but you also have a meeting scheduled on that date, so you can tag that on for action as necessary, depending on what you decide. But I really appreciate all the work that y'all have been putting in this over the last few months, and I'll turn it back over to President Williams, and hopefully that captures all the notes over time and staff is ready to answer any questions you have. We do not have an additional presentation tonight. It is, we're here to, you know, again, take notes and continue to shape work for your June meeting. Mr. President, trustees of the Board, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Christoffin. Just one clarification, and I think our last discussion, there was some indication that we, there might be some notice published between now, sometimes in the relatively near future, that might level, give an indication of the budget and/or tax rate, and then what that rate, that tax rate might need to be in that notice? Is there a notice that's intended to be published relatively soon? And if so, are we, what are we thinking of? And does it require a tax rate? And if so, are you looking for guidance about what tax rate to include? I know that that notice may not be required if, in fact, we're not gonna prove the budget till later, but I'm just trying to make sure, because we did talk about potentially a notice in the next month or so, maybe even as soon as this week. Ms. Conley-Abram?
Ms. Conley-Abram, our Chief Financial Officer, has it all mapped out for you?
Thank you.
Do you want to explain that? Thanks.
Good evening, trustee members. I'm Nicole Conley-Abram, CFO. Initially, we were scheduled to adopt the budget in the June 18th board, regular board meeting. Consistent with that, we would have had to publish notice in the paper by May 25th. And so since we did not have a decision about the tax rate that we would advertise in that newspaper posting, the Board gave guidance that we would hold off on formal adoption of the budget in the August timeframe, which would be August 27. So scheduled for August 27th, you would have to adopt your budget as well as hold the required public hearing. So statute requires us to notice, provide notice and advertise that public hearing at least 10 days before the public hearing. And you can have the public hearing on the same day that you adopt the budget. And considering the fact that we've already, would have had two public hearings, we sort of met our due diligence in terms of debating, having opportunities for the public to weigh in on the budget process. So that's why Dr. Christoffin's statement said that we would need to, the Board would need to take action on the actual tax rate that's published in the notification by August 13th in order to meet the notice requirement for that August 27th public hearing and then subsequent adoption.
And that, and that date is August 13th?
Right. You would have to take action because we'd have to have at least 10 days to run in the advertisement to meet the schedule for August 27th public hearing.
But so, no notice prior to August at this point? Given the discussion we had at our last meeting, that because of the uncertainties, we weren't gonna try and publish something earlier, which really had been the plan initially, but with all of the variables that are still at play, we can try to lock on the expenditure budget, but that does not require a public notice with a public tax rate that the Board needs to decide on in advance?
No, not until, we don't have to run the advertisement until, within the 10-day window. So the Board can take action in June if it wants to say, we want to publish a tax rate notice of whatever it is at that moment in time in June, and we'll take that and run that advertisement when the time comes in August and then have the scheduled public hearing. But there is no requirement at this point in time for the Board to take action on the notice.
Okay, thank you. So Board members, gives us a little bit of time to sort out, because of all the variables that are still moving, about what that tax rate will be. What Dr. Christoffin alluded to is that we're, at the same time, we're trying to lock on the expenditure budget to make sure that there's a pretty clear direction for what to spend, but the revenue side of the equation is what's a little bit less certain. We have a certain, we know what our revenue's gonna be at this point from the school finance formulas for the state, unless we choose to go for a tax ratification election, which could help us address some of the other expense challenges we have, since we are operating in a deficit budget for next year. So let's open it up for a conversation about, and I think Dr. Starfin said it, it's not a matter of if we're gonna have a TRE. We know, given the school finance formulas, the struggle that we're facing as a district to meet the needs of every kid and the challenges that the state's budget cuts are having on us, in addition with the transition to a new accountability system and higher standards, ultimately, we're gonna have to go. So it's not if, but really, the question is when. And the list that you see on page three under this item is also some of those variables, and then one of the other questions is what else do we need to know before we make the decision about if and when? So we'll open up the conversation from the Board. Ms. Parkstall?
Thank you. For tonight's discussion, I'm just looking for a tighter, maybe, framework on what it is we need to accomplish with a discussion tonight. There, on page three, I think a comprehensive and thorough list of items that have been placed up for discussion or that the Board would like to hear more about before a decision is made by this Board. So I'm not sure what the purpose of our discussion is tonight.
I think part of it is, is there anything that's not on that list that you would feel like you need to know about, so staff can get it?
Or you can take some off?
Or take some stuff off. And then if there's some indication at this point, if people are still comfortable, in effect, putting our decision-making process on pause until we get into June to see if we can address some of the variables about what the other taxing jurisdictions are doing, but if, truly for guidance, if, to the administration, so that they're gathering the information that they need to gather to help the Board make the decision of when they want to go, are they ready to go? And I'm assuming, based on our prior conversations, it's not a matter of if, but it's when, and then also, how much and for what? So what does the Board feel like it needs to have in terms of information to be able to answer the questions of when, how much, and for what? So this is what the superintendent and her team have gathered so far from the last conversations? Is there anything that's missing on here? And is there any other information requests that the Board would like to have, or just conversation among ourselves to get a sense of what the rest of the Board's thinking? That may not have narrowed down it much, because I think it's still a little fuzzy. Dr. Christoffin?
So, so I'm not, so I'm not sure, I'm not trying to answer that question. I just wanted to add, like, when we, when we went through the 12 that the Board put together, there are only three of the 12 that I feel like we could be at the right spot, maybe a fourth, depending on what we see happening in other school districts that we might be able to bring back to you in time for June. And so while I don't know, I don't know what y'all want to talk about, but what I would like to put on the table for something to be a partial driver in this conversation is I went to name, you know, those things that we thought we could get to you by June, and then the question is, you know, do y'all, I guess for us as administration, do y'all feel like all 12 have to be figured out before you get to even potential consideration of something for, in June? Knowing that you're taking all the August actions, but where you could actually say to the public, yes, we feel like we're going for a tax ratification election in November 2012? Is it, does it have to be the whole list? Is it a partial list? And for us, just, you know, first blush, when we were trying to go over it as a team, number one, number three, and number nine, we felt like we might have more information by the time we see you in June, right? Number one, number three, and number nine. Then others, for example, to us, we thought, you know, there's like a bucket, I would say, I put an X on, like a X like, you know, I don't think we'll ever be able to answer that before the end of the school year in 2013, where y'all might feel comfortable, you know, particularly comfortable. So like, number five, to me, I think is, you know, could ebb and flow for an entire school year. We might never know exactly where we are on that one. I, oh, I'm sorry, my fourth one was perhaps number seven, if I knew what all the other districts were doing around teacher salaries.
Your fourth one for checking up or next?
Circles, or which I feel like I might be able to get more information for is one, three, seven, and nine. And then I Xed off, or we Xed off, number five, because we just were like, you know, economic climate, city, state, federal? I mean, could, I mean, could be anything, you know? So we also felt like, where was it? The, number 11 might be a little too far out. I mean, it will come sooner or later, but maybe not in time for a 12 or 13 decision. And then, you know, and then there's gonna be ones that fall in the middle for us, like the possible legislative actions in 2013. That one, if you want to know that, you've got, you're definitely waiting till November 2013. That's a, that's a definite, we will get, but you won't, you won't feel comfortable till November 2013. And, and I think that's tied to number six, the new, and I wasn't really sure what people meant by new program, but I thought you meant new programming or statutory requirements because the law changes. And again, that doesn't come until the legislative session, and that might still be a November 2013. Now, the rest of the things, I feel like there's another bucket called AISD can't do, somebody else has to do for us because it's skirting too close to the law. And, and while you didn't say it this way, but like, number four about the public opinion, which, you know, the only way we would know that is if somebody polled, you know, that kind of thing. So that's not something we can do. We would be at the mercy of some, something or someone else who's willing to fund that and let us know. So that could happen at any point, but I would say, if that's, if that's critical to you and you're trying to make a decision in June, then, you know, the Board President or someone like that has to be, you know, working with the right people so that that's happening, so that there's information in time for June. You can always do it, but you've got to get someone to fund it and lead it, and that's not AISD. That's not, we don't control that one, in my opinion. But I wasn't sure what y'all meant by that, but I kind of heard, I heard it as polling. And then what I felt like we could do are the things like number two, number, where is it? Number two, number eight, and number 12. And so that's all about, you know, our budget reduction plans, how do we summarize things for the public so they know what we've done, so that we can communicate the budget reduction strategies we've had? What happens if we don't seek a tax ratification election? And what does that look like in out-year budget cost against Senate Bill 1? And then, and then the district's federal budget and programming? You know, we'll get information about that from a lot of different folks, but at the end of the day, those are things that the Chief Financial Officer, I think, can continue to pull together and work through for y'all over time. And while, you know, there might, you may have meant other things by the words you used, and I still thank you, Christine Brister, for taking all these notes and making sure she got them to us. That was, you know, so I guess I wanted to say that so that you knew, in my opinion, I can't, the administration would not be able to get all this stuff for y'all by June. And if that made, if that was a deal breaker in- And if that made, if that was a deal breaker in what you were considering, then you probably could be making, getting pretty comfortable with the position you're going to be in, which would probably mean that November 2012 was off the table. But, you know, if there, if it's a third of this, or if you can slice and dice it in a different way and give me better direction on what you want me to go and really crack the whip on and get you information, like you just can't make, if all the stars aligned, and let's say, the medical school and a bunch of other stuff, we knew wasn't going to be there in November 2012, what would you want to know so that we can get you the most information possible to help you resolve this, you know, by your last board meeting? And so, that, I mean, that was my, that's kind of like the last piece of, and I'm sure that doesn't answer your question, but I hope that it gives you a sense from the administration, since these factors were created, since we left you, those are the kinds of questions we've had.
That sort of answers my question, but I guess I'm looking for, what would be a desired outcome of this discussion? I don't want to hold up the discussion anymore. I know my fellow board members have things to say, but I feel like we're discussing this because additional revenue is needed. Is it the administration's position that that is needed whenever the board says it is? Is it needed now or later? Or, I think this gets to the question I had, I think it's number eight, impact analysis of future revenue constraints. This is being served up because there is additional revenue that is needed, is, so, as a board, are we just, we're discussing whether we're going to fulfill that need sooner rather than later? And then, what is the, what is the desired outcome of this discussion?
Well, I think the question's on table is, we know, and I'm giving ballpark, we have a $20 million deficit for next year, or more, I'm not sure of the exact numbers. And, so, we need additional revenue, because we have, we have demands on expenditures, we've already made cuts, obviously, huge cuts over the last year, two years, very painful. The, there's a revenue shortfall in the next school year beyond what we absorbed this year from the state, which is what's driving some of that deficit. We actually are going to get less money net next year, increase the recapture. So, I think the question is, we need some revenue if we're going to operate at a balanced budget. We can, we could afford potentially to operate with a deficit budget this year and take the impact of that and fund balance, not the best way to run the railroad, and long-term, not a sustainable strategy. So, the question is, we need to go to the public to ask for additional revenue. Question is, when do we go? And I think the, some of this list was, what do we need to know, almost irrespective of when we go? What does the board need to know about whatever tax increase it's going to go after? How much? What it's for? How we'd use it? The impact of timing is a separate question, which some of these variables on here are the things that might impact the timing decision, what other taxing jurisdictions are doing, what's the med school initiative, you know, what's the bond election for the city, you know, what are those plans, and are, and what are their tax increases, even irrespective of something they have to go to the taxpayers for, that we probably won't have visibility till June to understand the timing? And I think there's a feeling in the, some sense in the public is that we could overwhelm the taxpayers if everybody went in November. And if these other initiatives were out in front of us, all went November, we probably would not be well-served to go in November. But we would like to go to, potentially, in 2013, be that June or November. We still would need to know what we're going to go for, how we would use the money, and just accept that there's going to be an economic impact of a fund balance drawdown this year, because we won't have the revenue replacement, assuming the tax ratification is approved, until the next school year. So, I'm probably not doing a perfect job, but when I look at two, seven, and eight, to me, those are questions that we need to answer no matter what, right? You know, what's, what's the impact, the salary gap? What are the other things that we might be using the money for? What's the financial impact of when we go? And how much does that mean each year? But we, as a board, have to get a sense of also how much. We have a capacity up to nine cents roughly, I think, 9.1. What do we think the tolerance is? And there's some sense of what we, you know, there may be information you have to get from polling, but I think the public polling is very difficult right now, because not all the factors that would impact a taxpayer's decision on a vote are yet known. So, it's hard to poll in isolation and say, "Would you support a tax increase for a school district?" I think there's a little bit of, it depends. Who else is asking for what? You know? And that's what people are trying to figure out right now, so that those that are doing the polling, I think, have a pretty informed poll. So, I think the good outcome today would be, is there anything on the list that we don't, that's not here, that we need to ask about? When do we need to know that? And what needs to be known, no matter when we go? And are there other questions that we need to know that impact timing? You want, we can, we can come back. I think Mr. Torres has a, you have a list over here? I was looking at him with a...
Before we transition, may I say something? So, just from our position, looking at the budget from the administrative perspective, I just want to be clear, it's absolutely necessary that we seek a tax ratification election if you want to sustain salary increases. Otherwise, we're definitely in the one-time, 3% equivalent world, and really have one year that I feel comfortable about recommending, and after that, it's, what we, you know, we're trying to protect other things from an administrative perspective, like a AAA bond rating and things of that sort. I mean, you just can't spin down the fund balance and not have a solution for how you have a solid financial plan to move forward. So, from our perspective, you know, the folks that are, you know, the hamsters in the wheel doing it, we know that we can't sustain our salaries without a TRE. What we gave you, the, as a, back in January, the three options were stopgaps, right? They're not a permanent solution, they're a way to make a step forward that's, you know, that can buy us some time for a year if we must, if, as Mr. Williams explained, there are too many things on the ballot, and we're trying to be so thoughtful, at least as one of the taxing jurisdictions, not to overburden our taxpayers and to be at the table with people, trying to legitimately work through these things, so they're not left standing at the ballot, you know, having to choose between two good, two good things, but how do we do this to support our whole community? And then, and then I would, I just want to say, is that, you know, if we do this, especially no later than November 2013, but if you did it for the 2012 timeframe, you know, and you've seen how I work and how my CFO works, I always prefer to have the district in the position of being proactive, where we're not on the back end of the bottom falling out, and we're preparing to lay off a bunch of people, and, you know, and you don't know what you can really fund, and then you're waiting for the white knight moment to come in, and money to fall from either the feds or the state to save the day, which we didn't, we haven't received in the, in the recent past. So, so, I'd, I prefer to see us be more proactive, and then, anything past November, I would say, anything past June 2013, from my perspective, is more reactive. And if you wait until November, you know, we are, that means we will have built a budget, it hasn't been, you know, it hasn't been supported by the voters. And if they say no, we better be prepared to spend everything out during that school year, otherwise, you know, and then you're, you're kind of back to what we experienced, where you're in a slew of, of staffing layoffs and a reduction in fours. There, there aren't a lot of options without revenue generation. So, from our perspective, and of course, we don't sit in your seats, it's very clear to us, you have to, you know, we absolutely have to do it. And, and at least from the perspective of the superintendent, I'd rather see y'all do it sooner rather than later, within the timeframe of the requirements of this state. And so, even though we could go in June, all of the law for the protections of staffing take place in the timeframe, Michael, Hauser, or someone who can help me, Mel, or someone, it starts, our drop-dead dates are things like April for renewal of teacher contracts and things of that sort, maybe the board can remember. I mean...
Forty-five days.
Yeah, 45 days before the end of the, of the school year. So, even in June, you're stuck. I mean, you can't go back and try to, you know, get off the bottom line. So, we're either cutting a lot of programming, or, you know, doing some extreme things. So, I just, I, I do recommend that we, and that, and if you listen to this argument, you know, basically, to me, you've got the district on the ballot in November 2012. You know, and that's, you know, and I, and I understand all the reservations about doing it this, you know, this way, and, and I'm hoping that in June, when everything starts, or more things start coming in from the other taxing jurisdictions, that we have a much clearer path forward. But I would even say, June 2013 is still a pretty dicey business. We will have to finish out that budget for the next year, make ends meet, or reduce, make reductions where we can, and, but be prepared to bite the bullet for the next year.
First of all, thanks to my colleague, Ms. Brister, and to staff for capturing this information the way you did, because this is exactly what I need to begin to put in one place everything that I would need to make a decision on when to go forward with the tax increase. Because to me, I agree, we need to do it, and, and in my mind, it's pretty clear, it's either this November or next year. So, so what I would ask is that, for any of the items on the list, that you can provide answers for, Dr. Karstoffen, that you provide them to us as soon as possible. And for those that you can't provide answers for, provide those to us as soon as possible as well. That means I win, and I win. So, no, what I'm saying is...
I can make up stuff.
No. What I'm saying is, there are other items on here that you probably have a pretty good, you know, as you said, that you could certainly help on number two, and number eight, and number 12.
Right.
Okay? I think you can pretty well provide an answer to number seven.
Right, yeah, that was just, I need to see what the other districts are doing, because I heard that they're doing...
Yeah, I think, right now, you, you know where that's going. So, I, so I think there's some others on here that you probably have some additional information.
He has such great faith in me, thank you. I will work on number, that number two.
And so, I would at least like to know where, what your opinion is on some of these, your opinion meaning the district's position in terms of the information the district has on some of these other items as well. So, so I appreciate that. I, I can't think of anything else, just, at least to put your mind at ease, from my perspective. I can't think of anything else that I would have to say, geez, I need to have, you know, number 13 and number 14, whatever. However, having said that, I want us to go back, and, and I want to supplement, not replace, but supplement this list with something else that we need to have in our hip pocket, and that's a list, a very short list, but one that is very important, on what I would term as factors necessary to plan for a successful tax ratification election. And to me, those items are, and Mr. Williams very carefully...
Ms. Brister, do you have your pen ready?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
And I'll give you this, if you want. One is selecting the correct tax rate increase that a majority of the voting community would approve, okay? And that's, that's going to be a tough one. It kind of goes to one of the items where you, where you have here, general public opinion, but to me, it's, we can want a very large tax increase, but that doesn't mean it would be a successful TRE. So, trying to right-size our tax rate that we go out to the public. Second, has the district, can the district show that it is currently spending tax money prudently, and can we make the case that future tax dollars will also be spent wisely? My number three is your number two, and that's developing an appropriate communication plan that outlines the budget, that outlines the efficiency reductions, that makes the case as to why we need to go out for a tax increase, and I, and I think that would serve two purposes. Number four, knowing which organizations might campaign against a tax increase and why. You know, one of the things that, on any issue, there's, there will always be two sides to every story, or two sides to every position, and it's always important to know why people might be against something. Not to say that we would suggest that they're correct if they're against it, but knowing what it is that they are opposed to can help us make our case to try to address some of those issues. So, knowing who might campaign against us and why. And then, the fifth one, and this would be, what are our liabilities in the eyes of the public and voting for, in the eyes of the public and the voting taxpayer? In other words, we know that there are people that might vote against it, for whatever reason, but we also know that we're not perfect, and so, acknowledging where we have our liabilities and knowing how to respond to people when they bring out those liabilities, as opposed to being defensive or not acknowledging that we have certain liabilities. You know, I'm proud of the district, I'm proud of the work that you've done, I'm proud of the work that our staff continues to do. Having said that, that doesn't mean we're perfect. So, as long as we know where those liabilities are, acknowledge them, and have a response when people bring those issues up, in my opinion, helps for the public to know that we're honest and that we know we're not perfect. I don't think any district in the state or in the nation is perfect, and that we will continue to try to improve in the areas where we have liabilities. So, if we can begin to develop this type of a plan, and I'm sure Ms. Barksdale and the work that she does addresses these types of issues in a much better way than I can ever do, but, but, but they're, they're the, the keys to a successful tax ratification election, and I think we need to have these ready at, in an instant in time, and as quickly as we can, so that, once we make that decision, we already have the answers to these questions as well. That's all, Mr. Williams.
So, Mr. President, trustee of the board, trustee Torres, I look forward to putting Ms. Tamila Barksdale to work right away. We will get together and start strategizing on that. Are you, you're good to go? I can call on you?
Later tonight, yeah.
Seriously, and we can call on you, right?
Of course.
Okay, great, we're on it.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Guzman.
Mr. Torres, you mentioned the, the people that would potentially not favor the TRE, and I'm sure you also meant the people, to a listing of the people that would favor, you know, even though you didn't mention it. Okay. What would be helpful to me, and if it's just me, I'm okay without getting it, but if we could, from the standpoint of what Mr. Torres said, having, having it all in one place, if, if we know the scenarios, for example, June, November, or next, next year, whatever, developing a pro and con for, for each scenario, or consequences of not going with a scenario, is, if that's, if that's pretty cumbersome, then, I mean, we've articulated, several people have articulated it ongoing, but if we could have just a narrative, a summary of pro and con of each scenario, I think that would be helpful in terms of having it all in one place.
Other comments or questions? Okay, Ms. Torres.
Just, just one other thing, Mr. Williams, you know, to, to the extent that we, as a board, you know, we, we have a retreat coming up in June, that there may be some of these issues that we may want to spend a little bit of time at the retreat talking about as well as a board in terms of support for a successful tax increase.
Okay, other comments? Ms. Snyder.
This probably has a little bit to do with item number 10 on this, but, you know, it's something that I have not been able to at least get around. Last Thursday, I went to the session, committee meeting at the state capitol on the interim joint committee for public school finance. And some of it, I'm, you know, the discussion was all over the place, as some of those kind of are, and this is only interim committee, they will not be voting on anything. But, you know, it's also the same group of folks that are going to be in the... But, you know, it's also the same group of folks that are going to be in the Senate and the House, state Senate, state House during the next session. There, one thing that was unanimous is that they are all very fully aware of the five lawsuits that have been filed against the state, the four that deal with the issue that we've joined, plus the one that addresses the so-called efficiency issue. But one of the things I heard was, to me, a complete game changer, that, you know, they were actually thinking about things like, instead of funding everything with local property taxes, what if we had a state income tax or a state property tax or a state IUAD tax? Which totally takes away this whole page. The discussion's gone. Our funding is completely different than what we're doing right now. And, you know, I, I have no idea how many people actually believe that kind of scenario is out there, but it is at least being discussed. And, you know, the one thing that I do agree with is that property taxes are not a long-term, sustainable source of funding for public education in the state. And that something's got to give at some point in time. It may not be the next session, it may be somewhere down the line, but, I mean, every one of us up here plays property taxes and we all know what the burden is. You know, the last letter I got from RICO was the standard 53 to 55 percent of the property taxes that we pay go to A I S D or, you know, any of the local school districts. So, you know, I personally think that we really need to wait till after the 2013 session at the earliest before we go out for anything. I think there needs to be a lot of discussion about, you know, what we're stepping into before, you know, we actually take that step. And if we do it either during or immediately after the session, I think we're going to be landing in the wrong place. But, you know, I, I, I do think that, you know, something's going to have to be done to get enough funding. I'm just not sure that we're going to be the ones that are going to be able to make that decision.
A clear front question. Did I hear you say this correctly? You think that if we do the tax ratification election after the legislative session, it's a mistake? Did I, did I hear that? Just, can you tell me?
My, my opinion is that if we do a TRE before the end of the next legislative session, it's a mistake.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I think there were just a couple of requests. I'm going to suggest, and I've seen this before, so this is not something you don't have, I think, which is, if you did, say, three, five, seven and nine point one cents, just each of the, I'm just, you could probably do every penny if you wanted to, but just what's the dollar gross to net we would get for that after the impact of recapture? And then at this point, what you would, I mean, you may not be there yet, but this is partly what you would recommend we use the money for. So if you get five cents, which is basically a net three cents, would you say all that goes to salary? But if you go to seven cents, would you then recommend the additional two cents goes to something else? I'm trying to get to what's the money for, based on what we would know, because we know we have a funding challenge already and to make the salary compensation payment sustainable, we need additional revenue. But if we go for additional revenue beyond that, is there other things that we need to pay for that we're not there, that we would, that we know there's shortfalls? And you've mentioned arts and athletics and, you know, pre-K and things that we're not paying for today. So what, and I think it goes back to what's the mix and match of those that ultimately when we do go, we've got to make the best case possible and we've got to figure out what the tolerance level of the public is and what we think we can spend well. I would also suggest as part of number two, not only just the communication plan about what we've done, the efficiency efforts, but some benchmarks that demonstrate that in fact, we are efficient. You know, we can describe what we've done to reduce cost, but something that would be able to be demonstrated and be comparable that would indicate that our admin spend ratio, and I think by the audit, it's 2.7 percent, this perception, there's just huge amount of money spent in general admin in public schools, which is not the case. But we need to be able to show with some indicators for those that are likely to see that is, and I think I'm going back to Mr. Torres, you know, some people will just say there's a bunch of waste, you know, with a lot of overhead, people in central office, and that's not the case. So I think some level of benchmarks that would indicate that we are demonstrating, not only that we've made reductions to gain efficiency, but that the end result is we're an efficient system relatively. And I think to Mr. Torres, I'm going to build, I expect us to do it well, but we're not going to be perfect, but no entity is, no organization is. And, but we need to be able to demonstrate that we are, you know, better, basically, as, performing as well as we possibly can and desirably better than anybody else that's in our peer group. One other thing is, I would suggest that as you look at your list, and I might, I don't have the categories yet, but I would group these because there are different types. And some of these are things that are dependent on somebody else. Some of these are just information requests that we need to have irrespective of when we go. You know, the, like, for example, two, seven, eight, some of these other things are things that we want to have no matter what. Some of these are things we're going to wait on. And then, once you get them grouped, I would suggest some BW update almost weekly with what you do know. So if, you know, it doesn't mean it all has to happen this Thursday, but what you do have and just continue to fill in the blanks as we move forward. And that way also gives the board opportunities to add additional items if they think that independent, what the categories are going to be. Other questions or comments at this point? Ms. Snyder.
Dr. Sharpen, one thing I'd like to see just included in some part of this, and I mean it fully falls in the communication plan or whatever else, is just a, a fund balance analysis. I mean, you made the statement a while ago that, I mean, you thought we could pull one year of a three percent one-time payment out of fund balance without it being much difficult. But my recollection, and these are very, very rough figures, is that we have about 180 million in fund balance right now. Is that essentially correct?
It's 172, is that right, Nicole?
Okay, and we have board policy that says that we have to maintain something like 14 percent on a continuing basis. Is that correct as well?
Right, it's 14 percent and the chamber is asking for 20 to 25. And what does the state comptroller ask for? What is that in a percentage? So I'm using...
Probably around close to 24, 25 percent.
So the state comptroller's asking for 24 to 25, so...
And is that part of the fast analysis?
Yeah. No, oh, no, this is, this is the new standard for the...
It's just that, I mean, it's not a requirement, it's their optimal level.
Okay, well, essentially what I'm looking for is, here's what we got, here's what we have to maintain, either by policy, what the chamber's asking for, what the comptroller's expecting, whatever. I mean, what, what kind of play is there actively in there? I mean, do we have one year that we know we're good with? Do we have two? I, I don't know the answer. That's kind of what I'm looking for. And as I said, it very easily can be to be, you know, part of number two here, so...
Right, and then, and my comment about the one year, if, if that was all we were looking at, a one-time payment with the three percent equivalent, we, you know, we were saying we could do probably two years, except we have a legislative session around the corner and that is not included in those, in those numbers. So, once you start putting all the things in that could possibly be on the horizon, it starts looking pretty shaky after one year. And, and then everything else, we have to wait to see the outcome. So I wouldn't want to, this is why we didn't even, we didn't even want to commit to, we don't want to commit to anything because anything with legs just makes us more vulnerable.
Yeah, and, I mean, I'm in a position where I would thoroughly support taking money out of fund balance this year to do a one-time three percent payment.
Right.
My, my preference would be to do that for two years.
Right.
Let the courts run their system, let the ledge do whatever they're going to do. Then we make the decision about what we need to do or what we can do, based on what the courts and the legislator have told us to do. But, you know, I don't know, do we really have enough money to do two years' worth? And again, it gets back to the communication.
Gotcha.
So I think just, that may be a good, the fund balance with the benchmarks that, that everybody's established would be helpful. Mr. Guzman.
I'd like to see number seven as soon as possible. Like, I guess I'm in the position, Mr. Torres is, hate, hate the Russian, only from the standpoint that we almost came to a consensus, or maybe there was a consensus, that how long could we wait to, to provide our teachers with a pay raise? And, you know, we, we had waited a long time already. And from the standpoint of the surrounding, the surrounding districts are, are doing something.
They are, yeah.
And, and obviously the competition's going to be fierce and then, you know, there's, there is an outcry in, with, among teachers about having to do more work and then Star is going to impose even more, more burden and so on. So, yeah, I'd like to see what that analysis would be. To, to try to do it, and, and I, I wouldn't argue against, you know, the prudence of delaying it to get as much information as possible, obviously as prudent, but at the same time, you know, there might be some significant consequences to waiting too long. And I wouldn't want to do it any longer than we absolutely had.
And, and Mr. Guzman, we have been tracking it and at least what we think we know or what we've read in the paper, we can fill in some of the box, the boxes and cells so you can see them. So, yep, we can get on that one.
Be great. And I'm going to build on that, say, not just, just teachers, because I know that some of the proposals out there have increases for different categories of employees and not all the same. I mean, some of them have some groups being a higher percentage or a fixed amount. So some has, you know, some analysis of the gap, but the proposals are actually turning out to be a little bit different than the pure salary schedule that maybe we have today. So, okay, other questions or comments? Okay, thanks. This is going to be a continuing conversation, I guess, to set expectations. We'll come back, maybe in, in June, talk about it again, and then we'll hopefully have more information in June, as Mrs. Conley indicated. We can go as late as August before we have to make a decision on the tax election, but we do want to try to get some lock-in on the expenditure budget, which includes at this point an expenditure, a compensation component by June so that people know going into next year what their budgets are and how much money they'll make next year. Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, we are, it is 9:47, we are adjourned. Thank you, board members.